Welcome to the June 17 City Council Work Session. Everyone here and at home, Councilor Brown has asked to put the motion that he let you know he was going to put out, to put that out first, so before we have the discussion. So go ahead, Councilor Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to, one, adopt the following agenda for today's work session. Five thirty work session, discussion of MPT program revisions. Two, reschedule discussion and possible action of Core Campus project, MPT application and surplus property after the seven thirty public hearing. And I'll speak to it if I get a second.
Second for purposes of discussion.
You moved in second.
Thank you. I changed the wording significantly. The initial request was a discussion only of Core Campus project because I thought that, you know, we still have plenty of time for action on that. I have a feeling that, I mean, we can still delay that, but if a majority of councilors feel comfortable in taking action tonight, that's, it can play out that way. The reason I like them separated is I believe that three pretty important topics to cover in an hour and a half, it's impossible to do any single one of them, the justice that it needs. There's actually two main ones. There's the MPT revisions and the Core Campus application. The sale of the surplus property would probably not take very much time, you know, assuming that people wanted to take action on the Core Campus application. So, but we have two very important topics and to kind of lump them together, you know, I think they need separate coherent chunks of time to really deal with them properly. So that's the reasoning. And I've changed the wording. Majority wants to take action tonight, they still can.
City manager?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Just on a couple of quick notes. One, Glenn is flying out tonight. He'll be here at the five thirty meeting. He won't be here at the seven thirty meeting. He has already existing travel plans. And then if the council chooses, of course, for the work session tonight at five thirty for the Core Campus, for the entire ninety minutes, items A and B, and then on June twenty-fourth, you might note that there's MPT coming back for that. We also could just take that entire work session for MPT and then move that safe demo into a different work session slot. So that's also, if that's important for the council to think about as you're deliberating.
Councilor Brown?
Well, yes, in my email, which I hope everyone had a chance to read that I sent on Friday, I said, quote, "I'm willing to delay the initial safe demolition work session yet again to July thirty-first or even September eleventh after the break in order to allow enough time to properly deliberate MPT revision and Core Campus application." That's an important topic, but I would think we need as much time as we can get to work over the MPT revisions because it's a complex issue. Stat's provided a very good initial framework, but it still needs quite a bit of work, in my opinion. And I just think that mashing everything together in one work session is not a good way to do it because it, I don't think it allows for proper deliberation. Thanks.
Okay. All those in favor of Councilor Brown's motion, please indicate.
Could you read the motion again?
Okay. Would you read the motion again?
Yes. My move to adopt the following agenda for today's work session. One, five thirty work session, discussion of MPT program revisions. Two, reschedule discussion and possible action of Core Campus project, MPT application and surplus property after the seven thirty public hearing.
Okay. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three. All those in opposition? One, two, three, four, five. It goes down. So we're now going to head back into our discussion on Core Campus. City manager? Yes?
You can be in every round, please.
I'll be glad to call on you every time.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor. And I'll just turn it over to Mike and his team.
Good evening. Tonight we continue our discussion of the Core Campus proposal and the MPT application for that project. Council has discussed this proposal at work sessions on May twenty-ninth and on June tenth. At tonight's work session, we'll provide information that was requested by council at prior meetings, and then we'll present the city manager's recommendation for your consideration. With that, I'll turn it over to Amanda.
I'm going to provide follow-up information from your June tenth work session and summarize the Core Campus application review. Starting with the follow-up information, the three main areas of inquiry were the housing market information, if-then scenarios, and the brownfield status of the property. The answer to that is in your packet. For the sake of time, I'm going to concentrate on the first two. For the housing market information, while the time between meetings was short, we did include in your packet a brief analysis developed partly with research and partly with local market analysts. The information we compiled is attachment A in your packet. Here are the highlights. Historically, the community-wide rental vacancy has been low and stable, usually between three and five percent. Currently, the vacancy rate is around four percent. This type of vacancy puts pressure on housing costs. This is reflected in that Eugene's rental housing costs are unaffordable for many tenants. As you've heard, forty-seven percent of all renters have a housing cost burden, meaning they pay more than thirty percent of their income for housing and utilities. Our research indicates that the student housing supply is still catching up to university enrollment increases of recent years. Rentals in the campus area have had nearly zero percent vacancy for many years. The demand for housing created by students tightens the vacancy rates for all renters in the community. More student housing adds to the overall rental supply and could contribute to a flattening of rents. Moving to the if-then scenarios. The two scenarios we explored were, A, if council grants the tax exemption and the Core Campus project is built, or B, if council denies the tax exemption and the Core Campus project is not built, with the results to focus on the overall impact to the housing market and the specific impact for the property at Broadway and Ferry. So looking at scenario A, where the project is built, as a single project, Core Campus isn't likely to have a significant impact on the housing market. Taken as part of the larger number of units scheduled to be added to the market, however, we could see increased availability of units outside the campus area, flattening of rental rates generally, and increased rental competition in student housing, including landlord upgrades to units. For scenario B, where the project is not built, the forecasted result to the housing market is hard to gauge. It's likely that a similar number of units would be introduced into the market over time. Given general local development trends, these units would likely be provided in smaller, lower-density development and dispersed on sites available throughout nearby neighborhoods. In regards to the impact for this specific property, we explored four potential outcomes. The property is redeveloped as a fast-food use, the property is redeveloped for an office use, the property remains vacant, or lastly, the Core Campus development. We estimated the taxes for these outcomes. Here's a graph of the estimated taxes over a twenty-year period. This line shows if the property stays vacant. Currently, it's just over ten thousand dollars, and in year twenty, it's estimated to be just under twenty thousand dollars. If the property is redeveloped for a fast-food use in a manner typical along this corridor, we see the dotted line here, and the year twenty estimate is just over thirty thousand If the property is redeveloped for an office use in a manner similar with the surrounding area and with the associated parking, the estimate at year twenty is just over seventy thousand dollars. Lastly, we have Core Campus. The estimated Core Campus amounts include the guaranteed additional payments made during years six through ten. The tax revenue estimate is the same as if the property stays vacant for years one through five, and then it exceeds all three other outcomes, starting in year seven, and the year twenty estimate is just over eight hundred thousand dollars. Briefly, I'll summarize the Core Campus application review. The existing public benefit criteria provided for a total of two-hundred-and-ninety points for this project, for the density at three-hundred-and-eighteen units per acre, their green building plan for LEED Silver certification, the accessible units, and its location. Core Campus has agreed to additional public benefits not included in the existing program, guaranteed payments over one million dollars that council could use for affordable housing, providing a local hiring plan with stated goals, and an outline for bicycle and pedestrian safety efforts. These additional public benefits are contained in the approval resolution in your packet, and the denial resolution is also in your packet. Lastly, the financial analysis conducted by staff and reviewed by the loan advisory committee showed that without the benefit of the tax exemption, the project would not qualify for the bank debt or attract the eleven million dollars in needed equity investment. Now I'll pass it back to Mike to talk about the recommendation.
City manager recommends approval of the MPT based on the demonstration of need and the performance of the project on existing MPT public benefit criteria adopted by the council and provided by the project. There's some other considerations. The significant alignment of this proposal with the goals of Envision Eugene, neighborhood impacts. This project would add housing to the downtown while the specific location will have minimal impact on nearby residential neighborhoods. There are financial impacts. This is an intensive, high-value and relative, high-value use on a relatively small site and will contribute more to future tax revenues than other likely redevelopment scenarios for the site. And lastly, on affordability, Core's proposed additional payments of over one million dollars during the exemption period could be directed by the council to support ongoing affordable housing efforts. With that, we look forward to your discussion tonight.
Okay. Thank you. I have four people in the queue. George Brown is first, followed by Mike, Betty, and Claire.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a question for the city attorney. Were you able to find a copy of the agreement with Four J, foregoing revenues from MPT and urban renewal projects?
I probably wasn't clear last time. There is no written agreement with Four J. Instead, the way the statute works is that if a city or a county adopts a MPT program, then that, the tax exemption only governs or only applies to that jurisdiction's tax rate unless other taxing bodies approve. And the way they approve is simply with a motion. Four J approved the City of Eugene's MPT program back in, I think it was the late seventies and again later in the eighties. There's no agreement between the city and Four J. It's just Four J approved through an action of their board. So there is no written agreement.
Okay. But my memory of our last meeting was you were going to try to find a copy of that.
Not of the agreement. What I was going to search for, and I just, I didn't have time to find it, were the emails that we had sent, I think, to the city council back when you were considering Capstone that outlined, here's the information that we had found in going through the records of minutes of council meetings.
I see.
Talked about that.
Okay.
But we can get that for you in the future.
Well, I think it's pretty important. I can always call, please, please try that because I'll try to get it from Four J also. Okay. Well, I think, let me get two minutes. I kind of want to review the enrollment growth projections of the U of O that we went over because I did a little more, a deeper analysis, and some of the figures changed. First of all, I want to say that I went online today and Hybeen Business, they chart vacancy rates around the country. As of May tenth, the vacancy rate in Eugene was five-point-two percent for apartments. So, and this is before graduation. So, anyway, so, from the enrollment projection, it's going to increase a little over two-hundred students a year, and so in ten years, there'll be twenty-three-hundred more students. And staff had a figure of sixteen-hundred that will come online next year. Of that sixteen-hundred, we were told that it included Phase One of Capstone. But actually, I dug a little deeper. It's only Building One of Phase One, Building A of Phase One of Capstone. So there's still nine-hundred-and-seventy-four beds to go. So here's a quick review of the math. Twenty-three-hundred beds, that's what, that's the enrollment projection of the University of Oregon at one percent a year, minus sixteen-hundred for next year. That leaves seven-hundred for ten years. Minus the nine-hundred-and-seventy-four extra Capstone beds that weren't accounted for. Now we're at minus two-hundred-and-seventy-four beds. Minus one-hundred-and-forty-three beds for the Patterson, now we're at minus four-seventeen. If we approve this for Core Campus, now we're at nine-twenty-five. But that's an overbuild of student housing because it's not taking into account what Springfield will do in the next eight years, what other developers in Eugene will do in the next eight years. They will, they will fill any demand. It's definitely an overbuild. And then we should remember that, you know, Riverwalk's coming online with four-hundred-and-sixty-six beds, and next door, a hundred-and-forty senior beds. So, and, by the way, without a MPT, and they're going to do four-and-a-half million dollars upfront for bike and pedestrian improvements. Undoubtedly, some students will live there.
Thank you, Mayor. On balance, I'm supportive of this application. I think I have been, for a whole lot of reasons all along, but some of the information that George brought up left me with some questions that I asked around the other day, and I want to just make sure and get clear answers from Glenn because I, I want to make sure we're doing this on firm footing, and I was left not understanding this very well, and I want to understand it better. So George just asked you about the Four J issue, and my understanding is that's based in the fact that we don't have fifty percent or better of the representative base involved. So what's our obligation in order to have authority at that point? Do we have to have that agreement with Four J or with another body to get us over fifty percent? Do I have that right?
Under the state statute, the tax exemption that the council grants applies to the city's tax rate unless other jurisdictions approve of the city's MPT program, to the point where more than fifty percent of the combined tax rate, the jurisdictions have approved more than fifty percent. So the city's tax rate is about, I believe, forty percent of the combined tax rate. When you add in Four Js, you get over fifty percent. So when Four J approved the city's MPT program, their tax rate plus the city's tax rate is more than fifty percent of the combined tax rate for this property.
So if they didn't approve or if their approval was silent, what would be our authority?
The, in that case, the exemption would apply to the city's tax rate but not to any other tax rate.
And the applicant would be obliged to seek out approval from those other bodies?
It's not an application-by-application approval. Under the statute, the other bodies approve the MPT program.
I, I don't know because, as you mentioned, we didn't get a chance to review those documents, but I had someone tell me that they were under the impression that that was a time-specific window of approval, that it wasn't open-ended, and that it expired. What would, if that was in fact true, how would that affect this?
Assuming it were true, then there would only be approval of the city council of the MPT program, in which case the tax exemption that you would authorize if you approved this tonight or in the future, it would apply to the city's tax rate. It would not apply to the other jurisdiction's tax rates.
Can the district amend that in some fashion after the fact?
Sure.
Their board could come in and say, oh, yeah, we agree too.
Right.
Okay. Well, I, as I said, I tend to support this on balance because of the massive impact on our local economy at a time when we certainly need the jobs. But those charts also, I appreciate that show a windfall, for lack of a better word, of property tax revenue to the city over the course of the life of the building. And certainly, the city needs it with our financial condition at the moment. But more importantly, I think it puts a whole lot of people to work with a project this size, and I think that's a good thing.
Betty?
Thank you. First, we're not discussing whether we want this to be built or not because we have no control over that, really. If they buy the land and it's owned that way, they can build it. What we're discussing is whether we should give them a tax break. And while, what we would be giving a tax break to a large company and guaranteeing a profit to them, while local homeowners are struggling to pay their taxes, to pay for their utilities, to maintain their homes, to, and dreading things which should be happy occasions, like when the child is invited to a birthday party and you can't afford to buy a gift, or your in-laws are coming to visit and you don't know where you got the money to feed them, or your child says that he or she wants to play in a sports team, which now costs money, even if it's connected to the schools. So while people are really struggling to pay two or three or four thousand a year in estate taxes, low estate taxes, and while the city needs the money, we are considering granting this tax break for years to a big company, big out-of-town company. And I think it not only looks bad, I think it's wrong. And if it were, I have no objection to their building it if they want to build it, but that is not what we're deciding. We're deciding, do they pay taxes like everyone else? Thank you.
Claire?
So, you know, when I add up the pros and cons of this project, I really see it as a net gain for the city, future tax revenue that we would not realize with a different project and won't happen without benefit of this MPT. It's a dense housing project straddling downtown and campus. They are offering an added community benefit of cash payments that the city can use to meet an unmet need that we currently have identified in our community in terms of emergency or temporary shelter. It will catalyze other development, bringing more things onto the tax rolls and bring students with means because it's a high-end development closer to downtown. For me, the cons seem less compelling and based more in ideology or concerns about appearances, and I feel a pragmatic approach and long-term view serves our city better than reacting to current political climate. So I see this as a smart investment for the city to make at really zero risk. The pros, high-density development, high-end steel and glass building, LEED-certified, long-lasting value, located on a transit corridor, straddles campus and downtown, catalyzes other development and economic activity, will bring, once it's on the tax rolls, will bring in high tax revenue. That won't happen without city action. They are proposing to lease or purchase another piece of property from the city that's been vacant for a number of years, and that will create more income for the city. It is convertible to condos. It's not strictly, always needs to be student housing. They're not, we're not waiving any SDCs for this project. It'll create over a hundred construction jobs, good-paying jobs. Core Campus appears to have a strong history of local hiring. There's an opportunity to dedicate money to a shelter from our end. Downtown Neighborhood Association supports the project, and we've heard from the head of the Metropolitan Affordable Housing project speaking for himself, saying he supports the site, and we'd also be developing a brownfield. The cons, it is a high-end housing development. It's student housing, which some folks question whether we should be helping to build more. It's an out-of-state developer. There's an appearance of unfairness benefiting a wealthy developer at the cost of other taxpayers and businesses who don't get a tax break. Some folks don't think it's the most beautiful building to be built. Some people don't like the aesthetics. I don't think that's our job to be deciding what the buildings look like. And some folks just have an ideological concern around the city shouldn't be involved in development at all. So I think the question before us is, do we want to provide an incentive for this project on this site at this time? I think this project helps us meet many of our goals for economic development, and I am planning to support it, and I hope my fellow councilors will as well.
Chris?
Thank you. First, I want to thank you for doing what I hoped you would do. I think the if-then approach is very helpful for me to understand what's at stake here. And I think you laid it out very well, and particularly struck by this table. This talks about what you get when you invest. I mean, you can have money now, that's a little bit, or you can have a lot more money later if you're willing to invest. I think that's the important part of this equation. Actually, I do think that we are talking about whether or not this project gets built. That is what we are deciding because, as we have seen, if we don't approve this, the project will not get built. It doesn't pencil out. The banks won't loan money. They can't make it, make it happen. So, yeah, it won't get built, and we shouldn't kid ourselves and say it'll get built anyway. It won't. Won't pencil out. Something will be built there, and that's what the if-then scenarios say. It'll be a fast food, or it'll be an office building or something like that. The revenue from those options will not be a fraction of what they will be if we invest in this possibility. Now, I recognize for everything Claire said, and I agree a hundred percent with everything that Claire said, and she's right. But we have to be cautious about spending money or saving money that we don't have in the first place. It's not like if we don't approve this, somehow the school district will get a whole bunch more money, or the city will get a whole bunch more money. There won't be any money. The only way there will be any money to talk about saving or investing or using for any other purpose will be if there's money there to use for that purpose. So with that in mind, if this project should be approved, I do think it is important that we consider the convertibility issues about it, that we consider the low-income investment aspects to it. I think that's a very attractive part of the conversation. If we do have the potential to realize this money, we should use it to good purpose, and I think that is a good purpose. The payoff, I think, is, is the important piece. We shouldn't just collect the money and run. We should try to benefit the community as much as possible with the savings that we will create as a result of this investment, and use it wisely and use it appropriately. And the building itself, I think the convertibility is a major factor. So for those reasons, I feel comfortable that those are being addressed or can be addressed and can be dealt with. So I'm willing to support the project for those reasons.
George Poling?
I'd just like to thank Claire for her clear and concise summary of what we've been dealing with now for several months. Pretty much says it all, I think. To me, I look at this as a long-term investment. In the long term, the city will benefit from this, this investment by the increase in the taxes that are collected at the end of the ten years and at the beginning year six with the additional monies that, you know, they've offered to start, start kicking in at year six. And, you know, I appreciate the work that George has done, especially around the student enrollment, student housing, the available spaces, et cetera, et cetera. But to me, it sounds like he's basing these numbers on just filling it with new students, whereas I'm looking at this project as taking some of the students that have started to spread out into the residential area and bring them closer to the university, which will take the pressure off some of these areas such as where Allen lives, or, you know, like maybe, well, whatever areas they are. So it's, it's not solely dependent on the increase of student population. I think what this is doing is creating new housing for new students and existing students. And, you know, we're looking at this Envision Eugene project where we're expecting a growth of thirty thousand residents in the next few years. Not all of them are going to be home buyers. Some are going to need someplace to rent. You know, maybe in the meantime, the homes that were used for student housing could be renovated and rented out to some of these new, new residents that we're expecting in the next twenty years. So I am in favor of this project, and I will support moving forward with it.
Okay. We are, have finished with round one. We'll be going into round two, George Brown and then Betty.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. Let's go to the housing analysis and compare it with the rents that Core Campus will be charging. We learned at our last meeting that fifty-four percent now of our citizens are rent-burdened. That is from Mike Sullivan. The analysis says forty-seven. The analysis says 47. When I got on council four short years ago, it was 40%. We're going backwards. We're going backwards. We've made no progress. More and more people approach that cliff of spending more than 30% of their income on their housing. So we haven't made any progress on that at all. So the analysis shows that the average rent for a one-bedroom apartment in Eugene is $630 a month, and for a two-bedroom apartment is $860 a month. Now, you know, and we blend this in with students moving from far away to campus, from campus to close in, and we talk about affordability, and we talk about rent burden. A family is not going to move into this building because they're going to be trading, or even a single person that's not a student, because they're going to be trading the average rent of $630 a month for one bedroom for $900 a month for one bedroom, or $1,000 a month for a studio. A family with a two-bedroom is paying 860 average. This is the average in Eugene. Are they going, is it likely that they're going to move into this project and spend $1,400 a month for two bedrooms? I don't think so. Because 54% of them are rent-burdened already. Who's going to move, who's going to move into this if they're not a student? It is clearly for students. There's no affordable family units unless we assume a rent-burdened person is going to go in and rent a two-bedroom apartment and spend, oh, what is it, 340 bucks more a month? Plus, let's not forget, 65 bucks a month for a parking space. It's very unlikely. And I, it makes me question, you know, like in the AIS on page seven, it says, "This helps meet Eugene Pillars' goal of meeting the 20-year multifamily housing need." It doesn't help at all. This is not multifamily housing. This is multi-units. It's not, it has nothing to do with families. It doesn't help meet that goal in any way, shape, or form. So I, you know, I just see that there's, there's really very few community benefits here. There's absolutely no affordability component. It's strictly for probably wealthy students, and it will, there's no, it won't create any diversity. It will be a perpetual transient monoculture.
Another round, George?
Recycle through every four years. Yes? Absolutely.
I just have a quick question. Do we know what the average rent is in Eugene?
Actually, I think George just, or Councilor Brown, just quoted that from our paper. It's not, average rent is by unit type.
Right. I mean, the average, not student housing rent, but average apartment rent.
Right.
Looked that up a couple of months ago.
Well, it-
For a single bedroom, it was about 705 for average, and for two bedrooms, it was 800 and something average.
Right. What we have is 630 and 860.
The same range.
So it's pretty close. But it varies a lot by unit type.
Yeah.
Yep. I would expect. Betty?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think we're making some false assumptions. One assumption that no one will build housing without a guarantee or a subsidy, and that, that the only other thing that might happen on this land is an office space or a fast food thing. It's possible that someone else might build housing there. And as, we can't say that it's either this or this because we don't know. Also, as we, as we grow, if more people keep coming, as most people think they will, as we run out of land, developers will be willing, be looking for land to use. And if this is empty, someone will want it without a subsidy. People are building things all the time without a guarantee and without a subsidy. So I think that we're just operating, that we should not make assumptions about what will happen if we don't. Thank you.
Claire?
So I just wanted to again point to the communication we got from Richard Herman, who's the director of the Metropor, excuse me, the executive director of the Metropolitan Affordable Housing Program here in Eugene, although he does say he's speaking for himself. But he does make the point that any increase in the overall housing inventory ultimately eases the burden on low-income families who are competing in the market for available housing. So it doesn't necessarily mean you have to create low-income or affordable housing in order to provide some relief for folks who are trying to deal with housing costs. And I have found, since I moved here about 20 years ago, that the housing stock was pretty limited, and renters were really on the short end of the stick in terms of their capacity to negotiate, or what kind of dog you can own and rent, all those kinds of pressures that come when you have a low vacancy rate and a lack of various types of housing. The other thing I wanted to speak to was the additional payments that Core Campus has proposed, which did make a difference for me in considering this, because I see those things as exactly the kind of public benefit criteria that we're talking about with the broader program, as something that this program should bring. If we're going to provide a tax break for this kind of development, we should be thinking of some very specific ways that we can create a public benefit. So having those additional payments, if we were in a position where the city was lacking in park space, and that was something that we really had identified as a need in the community, and this particular development couldn't ride around it to create more parkland, we could use that kind of payment to go and purchase other parkland in other parts of the city. That, that particular thing is not something we need right now. What I've identified as a community need is to create a fund for emergency or temporary shelter that the city would have some control over and be able to participate more fully in providing that kind of shelter, whether we contract that out or some other program. But it gives us some control over a need that we have identified right now in our community.
Mike Sullivan?
Yeah, I just wanted to add from our previous session, we had an estimate that we received from a local analyst that up to 10,000 students are likely living outside the immediate university area and diffused out into neighborhoods throughout the community. And indeed, the discussion in this little analysis that we did is really redistributive. That notion that, given the opportunity, existing students and students who are coming to the community and not understanding where to live except in large developments that are advertised nationally, would tend to distribute towards the campus and away from neighborhoods over time, which would have a supply-easing effect.
Hey, Allen?
A question about the local hiring plan. It seems from the resolution that, in the resolution to approve number three, local hiring, that's really just a requirement that they provide a plan. There's no actual numerical or criteria threshold that they have to meet in order to satisfy that. They just have to make sure that they give us a plan.
That's the proposal as it stands, that's correct.
Because we haven't really fleshed that out as a council, so we don't, can't say to them what it should be, which is also kind of part of the problem with us applying these, the application before we've done the revisions, but that's water under the bridge. I appreciate how much discussion and analysis we've had on this project, and how much staff has responded to every question, or all gazillion of our questions that we've had. And I think this is the most studied and most scrutinized MPT application ever. Probably a long shot. So I think we, we have the information. I approached this by weighing pros and cons, and I appreciate Claire's list of the pros and many of the same things I had on my list. I like the project. I like its location. I like the potential spin-off development and the synergy that that would create downtown, the density, the investment, the jobs that would create, and the eventual property tax. But I especially like the precedence of the affordable housing payment, which they would make to the city, which I proposed a long time ago. So I really like that part of it. But when it gets to the other part, the con part, I get to, should we give a tax subsidy for student housing, which this is? And I, I get stuck. And I get stuck for three reasons. One, there is a local hiring plan. There's just a requirement that they submit a plan. I think that the LEED Silver level that they're doing is insufficient. It's just barely above where we are right now in terms of building code, especially with regard to energy, if at all. So that doesn't really merit, in my mind, much of a public benefit. But then finally, I really get stuck with the need for more student housing. That's my part of the, where I live, in that part of the city and the part I represent. And I just do not feel like we need to subsidize with tax exemptions more student housing, especially high-end development like this one. And I think we are overbuilt in student housing, and we're starting to see the ramifications of that through lower vacancy, higher vacancy rates in buildings. Steve Romani pointed out some of his on the Center Court in Skybox. And I don't really think this is convertible. There's too many four- and five-bedroom units in there for them to really be convertible to, to, to regular housing. Like about a third of it is related to that. So, and I think really, convertibility is just as much about the culture as it is about the physicalness of it. So for those reasons, I'm, I'm not going to support the application.
Okay. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. You were mentioning during your presentation that the student housing vacancy rate was 0% right now. Is that what you said? Did I hear that right?
I said for the past several years.
So for the past, and you, did I hear you say right that we're kind of just barely catching up to the demand, that we haven't caught up completely?
Right. Over the past five years, the U of O enrollment has grown by 23%.
What's a healthy vacancy rate? In other words, if the market with a healthy vacancy rate allows people to not be massively, you know, rent-challenged because the rates are so high, I mean, when there's, when you can't find a place, they're all, demand is huge, they're all taken, that's going to skyrocket the costs. What's a healthy vacancy rate?
Hard to put your finger on that, but HUD has used a standard for many years of 5%. The best information that we have, which comes from speaking with the local analysts in the multi-unit market, is the current rate of vacancy is 4%. If you-
Rest of the market.
In the market as a whole. If you look at the literature, it leads you to the conclusion that a community that has a younger population or a mobile college population, you would expect the vacancy rate on an ambient basis to be somewhat higher than a community that is less characterized that way, which would lead you to the conclusion that even at 5%, the community would be relatively tight. At 4%, somewhat tighter, and it's been, over the years, it's gone between 3 and 5 with some degree of stability.
But the campus area has been, and the campus student housing is and has been at 0%. It's tight as it could possibly be.
Specifically, what we've heard is that the campus area has experienced higher vacancy rates of late, and then those units were absorbed.
And that's what's driving people into the neighborhoods?
It's consistent with this notion that vacancies in a younger population are a little bit more erratic than they are in a more typically structured community.
Everybody knows that we've seen more and more students moving deeper into established neighborhoods. What, what would you say has been, how long has that been going on? How big, you know, how many students are we talking about over the last five, six years?
Really, the only specific information we have is that, which we have garnered from discussions with analysts in this marketplace, and that estimate of 10,000 students living outside the immediate campus neighborhood.
Is that, the 10,000 students is different from, say, five years ago? That's, that's from-
I, I don't have that number. I can only guess that that number probably goes up with the student population as a whole. We'll point out that that 23% increase in enrollment over the last five years was unfocused by the university.
So there's really no way we can say with a straight face that we have plenty of student housing?
Obviously, there are a lot of units coming on. What, what we can certainly say is that the housing supply as a whole for the community has been stressed, and a good portion of that population is student demand.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'm going to go into third round now, and that's George Brown and then George Poling.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, you know, depending on what website you go to, or what real estate agent you call up, or what property manager you call up, you're going to get a different vacancy rate, no doubt. The one I looked up today, as of May 10th, 5.2%. That's fine. It's common all over the country. It doesn't indicate a shortage of units. That includes all units. Nobody separates out student housing because it's so hard to do. You can't do that. I mean, you could go around to every development in the near, near the university and go to an apartment house that where you see, you know, students, and you could find out how many live there. You could go through that. It would take a long time to do that. I'd just like to go to page 12 of the AIS. This is, oh, no. Yeah. There's an assumption here. This is the Housing Market Analysis. The last paragraph. "Now, the Core Campus project and proposed permitted projects could alleviate livability, neighborhood livability impacts by further concentrating students on appropriate sites closer to campus." This is totally an unexamined assumption. Do we want that? Do we want to have a great, more, enlarge the student ghetto? I mean, there's a student ghetto, the West University neighborhood. The owner occupancy is 1%. 1%. Is this desirable for a neighborhood? There's no families. There's no children. There's no schools. Do we want to exacerbate that trend and make it, hey, let's make it go down to half a percent, and pretty soon it'll be zero? Is that the goal of our MPT program? And what's wrong with students living out? I mean, I think it's great to have students disperse. When I was a student, I didn't live near campus. I worked and I, you know, and went to school, and I didn't live near campus. I rode my bike. You know, that's why we have bicycles. That's why we have LTD. That's why we have a transit system. Students live in Springfield. They live in every word in Eugene and Springfield, and they commute to school. They hop on MX. This is why we built MX, so one, one major reason. By, by having students not concentrated, I will tell you, the landlords in all of the outer areas are thrilled to have a student rent their house, or their, their two-bedroom unit, or their one-bedroom unit. They're absolutely thrilled. It's when you concentrate them, that's when the wild parties start. That's why we had to pass a, a social host ordinance strictly for, you know, South University. Well, actually, it applies to all over town, but the main problem was the concentration of students in the student ghetto at South University and West University. So, you know, to make these-
George? Mike?
Yeah, I only wanted, which, which, Mike?
She means you, I think.
You mean you, Mike Sullivan?
I only wanted to add that Councilor Brown is correct. No one separates out student units as part of a vacancy because there's no way to separate a house or an apartment that might be rented by a student. They're simply renting all over town. With respect to vacancy rates, it's also true that there are a lot of vacancy rates that are estimated on the web or wherever you would go. We got our information from local analysts who are connected with appraisal organizations. They follow that because it has a lot to do with the value of development for financing purposes in the community. So, I mean, that's the source that we used.
George Poling?
Yes. I move to adopt a resolution approving a multiple-unit property tax exemption for residential property located at 505 East Broadway, Eugene, Oregon, Core Campus applicant.
Second.
Boobton seconded. Yes, George?
I have one question, one last question. I'm wondering why we haven't seen a triple bottom-line analysis of this project? When we talk about the TBL all the time, it's this great new innovation thing that we've done, and we never saw a TBL. I think we still have lots of unanswered questions about this. I think it's too early to vote on it. We can easily vote on it next week or the week after. We have until, practically, till July 15th or July 17th. I'm, I'm not certain. I want, I still want to see a copy of the written agreement signed by both parties about the paybacks to the City of Eugene. All we have here is a resolution. We don't know what conditions are. We don't know if like, well, oh my gosh, our occupancy rate's only 85% this year, so we can't pay you that money that we promised you. I want to see a written agreement. I want to see it nailed out. That's how you do it in the business world. That's how you do it in the business world. This kind of a kiss and a wink and Bob's your uncle stuff just doesn't work for me, you know, when we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars. That's one thing. If we approve this tonight, that's, that's, I think it's a really bad idea to, to help finance a, a clear overbuild of student housing with no, no clearly defined benefits for families. Down the road, six years from now, who knows what's going to happen? I want to see that, and I think it's irresponsible to, to approve this without seeing these documents. We've got plenty of time. It won't hang them up at all, and the motion's already on the table. I have a feeling, well, actually, I don't know how it's going to go. We'll just have to find that out, I suppose. But yeah, I, I'll go back to my, my question. Where's the TBL? Where's the triple bottom line? Where, you know, did the Human Rights Commission look at it? Did the Sustainability Commission look at it? No, obviously not. We don't see their analysis. So, we're, we're proceeding ahead without the benefit of the much vaunted triple bottom line. And I'm just really, I think the community's going to be very disappointed that we didn't take a little more time and examine this a little more thoroughly, rushing into this. We still have another month before the deadline, before we all go on break, and it's, I think it's actually kind of irresponsible to vote on it until all the questions are answered. Thanks.
Mayor?
Yeah, I, I don't feel like we're rushing into this. The Core Campus folks have met with the Downtown Neighborhood Association maybe six or eight months ago. I think this council's been looking at this application and, and the MUPD program in general. If it's appropriate at this point, I'd like to offer an amendment to the resolution based on the city attorney's recommendation of how to capture our intention of how we'd like to use those payments in lieu, in lieu of affordable housing to amend. So, I would move to amend Section 1, Paragraph 2 of the resolution to add the following language. "It is the intent of this council that the funds received pursuant to this paragraph shall be used, at least in part, to fund emergency and temporary shelter."
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
Actually, I'll accept it as a friendly.
So will I.
So, it's in the motion. All right. I have Alan, and then Greg, and then George.
Yeah, I have a question. So, it says in, at least in part-
Correct.
...without specifying how much.
Right. So, I would have been all right to say in whole or in part to fund emergency and temporary shelter. I don't know if that's-
Because the intent's affordable housing.
Well, no, my intent is emergency or temporary shelter to-
All of it?
No, part of it.
How much of part of it?
Well, that would, since we can't bind future councils in terms of how they will expend this money-
Yeah.
-it's just giving direction to have some of it at least be looked at as, as a down payment on-
Safe. Well, well, saying that you don't want to stipulate the amount because it can be changed, the whole thing can be changed, so that doesn't-
Correct.
I, I think it's wiser to probably put a number on it, but might, I might be pretty sure we can come back to that. I had a question about the, the payments in lieu of affordable housing. The, the structure for making sure that these payments are made is under, is it, is it a, it's not a contract with them. It's, what is it that's enforcing this, that they would make those payments? Is, is it going to be in the MUPD application so that if they didn't do it, it would then put them in default, and therefore, they would, they would not get their tax exemption?
Yes.
Even in the very first year at $30,000?
No. Well, the, the default would occur if they didn't pay the $30,000 in year six, then they are not complying with the conditions of approval, and we will bring, and what the resolution says is that the city manager shall bring to the council, start the process for the council to terminate the exemption, because you have the authority, not the manager, under the statute and the code to terminate the exemption. So, if they don't pay the $30,000 by July 15th of that year, of year six, then you will see a request that you terminate the exemption. So, the, from my viewpoint, this is better than a contract because you hold all the cards. They have a choice. They can either pay $30,000 in year six, or they cannot pay $30,000 in year six and lose, what, about $3 million worth of tax incentives over the next five years. They can pay $60,000 in year seven. I mean, each year, the tax is roughly $550,000 to $600,000 that they're saving. So, if they don't want to pay $30,000, they lose $550,000 to $600,000. That would be true for each year. So, in year 10, if they paid year six, seven, eight, and nine, year 10, they're supposed to pay the city $475,000. If they don't pay that, according to staff notes, they lose $620,000. And you don't have to sue them. We don't have to go to court at all. We just come back to the council, and you declare that the exemption is terminated, and they will wind up having to pay that property tax, or it will show on their property tax bill as delinquent, and the county assessor can then foreclose on the property.
I agree with you, except for one little thing which makes all the difference in the world, is that this does not bind a future council to require that they pay that amount of money. That future council, when you give them that proposition that they didn't pay the $30,000, are you going to get rid of, are you going to declare them in breach, then can say, no, maybe not. And maybe in the next year, maybe not. And eventually, the council can do that. A contract, however, with that organization would be between the, I think, between the city and the, and the developer, and would bind them, wouldn't it? To make those payments. I mean, you're betting that they'll make the smart decision and that the council will enforce it, but the council may not enforce it in the future.
So, if there's a contract, and they choose not to honor the contract, then the city will have to take action by initiating a lawsuit to enforce the contract. The cost of, and the, the ease of having the council declare the exemption terminated much easier than going to court and asking the court to enforce a contract.
I mean, does it? Well, all those options are bad, but it seemed to me a contract has a lot more, would, would actually bind future councils, and, and this mechanism really doesn't.
So, one other thing just to point out. My assumption, and it's an assumption, my assumption is that the financing agreements that the developer is going to have, both with the equity partners, with the banks, those are all going to require them to make these payments, because those entities have a lot to lose as well, and they're going to make sure that this money gets paid. So, i- is it possible that the money doesn't get paid? Yeah, there's always a possibility it doesn't get paid. Tax exemption's lost, they don't pay the property taxes, county forecloses. Is it likely that the money does not get paid? Not based on my experience, not based on the financial analysis that staff has done, because would you pay $30,000 or not pay $30,000 and risk losing $600,000?
Right. I agree with all that analysis, but one part you didn't talk about, which is the political part, which is, so a future council in year six gets a substory from the developer that says this project, you know, we're, we're going to go bankrupt, this is terrible, you know, the sky's going to fall, and, and, and the council lets them off the hook. That's the possibility that I'm more worried about. The council making the decision to, to not enforce, then all, the rest of this, that outcome's happening. And I like to see it be a lot more tighter than, than this.
Greg?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make this short. Alan asked my question, Glenn answered it, so.
Okay. Pretty short. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm concerned that a community that would elect that council, that would do that personally, that's a whole other thing, I suppose. One of the things that's interesting to me about this particular project, we didn't, we haven't really discussed much, and that is like the, the other student housing project that's going on downtown 13th and Wyam is, because you see it in the paper, it's a stick build, it's, it's lumber, it's wood, where this one is concrete and steel predominantly, as I understand it. Do I have that right?
Yes.
Okay. So, one of the things we always talk about is the, the things that get built in our community that last and that don't last, and that we've preserved and haven't preserved, and all that sort of thing. So, I would think that something made out of concrete and steel's going to stick around a lot longer than something made out of wood, right?
Yes.
What's, do you calculate the useful life differences of buildings like this?
That's a hard thing to put a, your finger on, but you'll, if we-
You don't calculate it?
If we get to the next agenda item, you'll see that the, the lease term requests they're asking for, the adjunct parking is 50 years, and the building is thought to have a useful life beyond that. Also, because you get, someone mentioned 100 years, but I don't think in terms of 100 years.
Right. So, a, a stick build is going to be, hello? A stick build is likely to be a lot less than that? What's the difference we're talking about?
Again, that's really difficult to put you for guess.
Well, you can guess, right?
I, I can guess, yeah. So can you.
The reason I'm asking that question is because, for example, the graph that we looked at up here, well, you're, you're quite a bit, your, your guess is going to be quite a bit more expert than mine, isn't it?
Right. In, the last time I looked at the IRS code for such things, I think the, the depreciable life is about 32, 32 and a half years, somewhere in that range. Without significant reinvestment, a lesser-built building is going to have a much shorter life. And durability is also part of adaptability. A building that is going to endure for a long period of time is also going to see generations of use, and because it has such a significant set of bones, if you will, repurposing that building would make economic sense at some time in the future.
Here's my point. The community has a rough time with this issue around MUPD. They look at it and say, that's not fair. And, you know, they got a point in a, in a lot of ways, but we lose sight of what it really means to make a smart, long-term decision, in my point, around these conversations. And yeah, we're granting them a discount for five years for part of six, seven, and eight as well, but by the calculation I just did here, at 600 grand a year, and if it's, you know, 60, 65 year, even after, when we get to the point where they're really collecting serious, we're talking about a building that will pay the city over its useful life $30 million in property taxes. Now, the analysis we saw there showed, you know, those very slight sort of, you know, increases of other uses, but it was really only a 20-year graph where we saw in the middle it goes up. But if you looked at it over the useful life of the building, you'd see that the discount period is a tiny little part at the beginning, where the rest of it is a huge chunk of money that the city, that will be used to pay for needed city services. And it's, let's do the math here, it's, you know, in the 6,000% more money than would be paid on that property if it were left a parking lot. So, it's, it's a very wise investment for the city.
And then have George and Betty one more time, and then we're going to vote. George?
Well, thank you, Alan. You hit it right on the head. That's why we need a contract. What if the council says, oh, you know what, you can't make the payment, and, and it's not just $30,000, year 10 is 475K. You can't, we're going to give you the exemption anyway. That is a distinct possibility. We don't know who's going to be on the council then. People will think up all kinds of fuzzy thinking rationales to go ahead and do that. Believe me, that's why there has to be a contract. Do you go to court for 30K? Well, you know, maybe not. Do you, for 475K? Yeah, that's what you do when someone violates a contract. You take, you go to court, and you let the courts decide and, and adjudicate it. So, I'll tell you this, I would have loved to have been a fly on the wall when Core Campus floated this to their equity partner at the boardroom, a D, D R W or D T W Trading Company. I can't imagine, they probably said, well, you know what, if you want to make a payback to the city, that comes out of your end, not ours. I would have liked to have overheard that conversation. I, I just, I don't see the public benefits here. I don't see that this does anything to further construction of, of multifamily, family units. I mean, obviously, it's all for students. It's, I, I just don't feel that we have any business subsidizing things like this. This is one area of the market that will take care of itself. I've heard this from everybody, with, without any tax breaks from the citizens. You know, I mean, there's this little thing in here, working with city on options for safe pedestrian crossings. This is in the resolution. That's basically meaningless. What does that mean? It, it doesn't mean anything. It means, oh, we'll talk about stuff. There's not, see, nothing's nailed down. This is, this is what's so wrong with voting to approve this right now. And it's, it's just this kind of a standard thing to, to have contracts and have things nailed down before you vote to award the tax benefit. And I, I have a feeling that most of the community's going to be really disappointed in our, if, if this thing goes through. I think they made it pretty clear during the election cycle that they're not really happy with all of those tax breaks. And there's really nothing political about it. All you have to do is analyze the numbers like, like we've been doing. It just doesn't, it's not, it's not a good use of tax subsidies. Thank you.
Betty?
I just wanted to mention depreciation. Rental properties do depreciate, especially more than other property, more than homeowner properties usually. And I assume that the taxes would be lower if there's depreciation, and maybe a lot lower. And if people don't continue to live there, it's happened with student housing some places, that it's empty and they aren't making money, they have a good case for not paying as much in taxes, I don't think we're, have a guaranteed amount in a few years. And I think it's rather amusing that we're talking about $30,000 being so great when we're compared to millions. It's, it's not a huge amount of money, they would be, it's like, it's like nothing, for them. Thank you.
Okay. I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion as amended indicate. One, two, three, four, five, and opposition. One, two, three, it passes. Next motion. Yeah, go on into that, and then we'll discuss it.
I move to authorize the city manager to negotiate and enter into a lease with an option to purchase the 901 Franklin Boulevard property to Core Campus, consistent with the terms outlined in the agenda item summary.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I just want to see if staff has anything they want to present to us before we have any discussion.
Also, somebody trying to get in, and I guess all the doors are locked. Watch them go from that door to that door. Maybe, Mike, you just go right to the last slide that says what the, the lease or the option to buy is, so people just understand what that is.
You recall that we, actually, the council approved a sale on this property about 12 months ago for $715,000. The, the proposal that we have put in front of Core Campus is a valuation based on a number derived from that sale, just over $17 a square foot. Based on our understanding of the footprint that they would be seeking to lease, that would bring in approximately $50,000 a year in lease revenues, and this property would also become taxable when it's leased to a private party. And I should mention that the absolute footprint of the leased area is still a little bit in flux, so that will be part of the negotiation that will go forward.
Okay. And I think I have George Brown in the queue.
Yeah, I, this is, this should go pretty fast after the other one. So, how many, how many parking spaces are there?
How many parking spaces in the area to be leased or sold? Do you have the, that number? I should point out that right now, the entire site is not used for parking. There's an old building footprint for a building that burned down some years back.
I believe they plan to use 88, or put 88 spaces there.
Okay. Thank you. I'm wondering if there's any environmental issues in the soil there from prior uses?
We do not believe so. We do not believe so. We have offered this on an as-is basis. It's possible that Core would want some additional information, but we don't believe there are any issues there.
Okay, so they would do their own environmental testing if they felt it was necessary. The reason, excuse me, sorry. The reason I bring this up is because, you know, even parking lots, you have to remediate any environmental problem. You can't just cover it up with asphalt and call it good. I mean, especially if it's, if it's already asphalt and you can go ahead and use it that way, but if you, if you take it up, then you have to remediate. This, this has never been paved over.
Actually, the site's been imprevious. It's covered either with a building or with pavement for quite a long period of time. Again, we don't believe there are any issues with the property.
Well, I just brought that up because it's always a concern when you're redeveloping an old, an old site, especially when you're not really sure what the total history of occupancy has been through the years. Okay, I guess that's it. Thank you.
Okay, I've got Alan and then Betty and then Claire.
I'm happy to see this get used and it's not great use parking lot, but it's a very weird lot in the way that it's configured. And also, it's right on the railroad tracks. I mean, right on the railroad tracks. It'd be a very difficult one to develop, which is why it's been vacant for a very long time. A couple of questions. So the property was appraised at $900,000, but we're doing a lease sale at 715, which is a previously approved price, sale price by the council. So why not, why not use the appraised value or an appraised value at the time of the sale?
The only reason we put that price forward is that the property stood on the market for two years. It didn't attract a purchase offer beyond that number. And even that number was developed, that was developed for a fast food reuse of the site, which, you know, if you look at the site objectively, fast food would seem to be a pretty reasonable approach to redevelopment. The ingress egress issues with that site are so compromised that it's hard to get that kind of value out of it. So value was somewhat questionable. So the last value we had was one that was based on the approved sale. That's why we used it.
What was the appraisal?
I don't have the appraisal date. The, I assume that the appraisal was done within the last two-plus years because we had that number when we went to sale, but I don't have the date.
Okay. Appraisal value seemed like a better price. So the length of the lease is 50 years, you said?
The request is 50 years. That could be done in a number of different ways. It could be done in a series of shorter-term leases with options for renewal. It could be done a lot of different ways.
So we don't have that nailed down yet, but they want to tie this down for 50 years if they can?
Right, they're looking for site control for a period of 50 years with the option to buy. And the proposal that we've put forward is that the price for that purchase would be determined on a market value at the time of sale, so not in advance.
And the option to buy occurs in what year?
It's wide open at this point. You know, if you had some suggestions in that regard, we could put those forward. What they're looking for is the option to purchase during the period of time they control, which would be during the 50-year period.
So would this lease details come back to council or is that under the purview of the city manager?
The, the recommendation is to approve going forward to negotiate and execute a lease based on these terms.
But we don't really know what the terms are.
Well, we know the, the principal terms, which are the, the term of the lease, the opening valuation that's used to determine the amount of the lease, and the fact that they want an option during the period of the lease, but the price will be determined prior to final disposition. So it's not predetermined now, which is another reason why it's not all that important to limit the availability of the option because you're not nailing down the price.
And the, you said that the annual lease payment would calculate at 6% of the property value and that would equate to, which is the property value, the 719 or the 900?
Well, the $17.56, is that what it comes down to? $17.31 a square foot.
That's based on the purchase offer of 700?
And we are using a, an area of 49,000 feet. The final area could be a little bit larger than that, could be a little bit smaller than that. It just determines, it'd be determined by the final design.
So that $50,000 is flat over the term of the 50-year lease?
Would not be our intention to do that, no.
So it'd escalate that?
We don't have an escalator here, do we? We would have to propose an escalator for the renewal terms. So if, if we had an opening year, opening term of 10 years, we would likely recalculate the lease at the end of that period.
Well, yeah, and, and if, over time, the property value, over a 50-year period or even a 20-year period, the 6% rate of return on the property value declines over time as the property becomes more valuable. If the, if the lease were flat, but if it's escalated at approximately the same rate that land values are going up, then it's, then it's an okay deal.
Right, if land values were able to float or floated naturally and we stayed at $50,000 or some large or fraction of that one or the other, we would be getting a diminishing return. We wouldn't be getting 6%. That would go down. So our goal would be to always get a return on, that's reasonable in the market and 6% is, that's a good market return on a land lease.
So it doesn't say anywhere in here that you're doing an escalator on that 6%, or the, the lease rate, or does it say what the term is?
That is a missing detail.
That might be, for someone who's doing the motion, take into consideration. The, I'm also interested in the fact that we think 6% or you think 6% return to the city is adequate, but Core Campus required 9% to do their development. Of course, theirs is a lot more risky and, and one might say that they have to pay taxes, but we just granted them property tax relief so that, that makes it, their need for rate of return will be lower. So why the difference?
Well, this is a land lease, not a, a construction investment. So we have a firm, Pacific Real Estate, that we have under contract to assist us with property management issues in the downtown and throughout the community. We reviewed the situation with them. We asked them for an opinion on an appropriate level set of land lease at, and 6% is a good level in this market.
So just in summary, we, we don't know what the appraised value is because we haven't done a recent one. We don't know what the escalator is on the term. We don't really know what the term is yet, but you're also, so you're asking us to approve this without knowing kind of those key terms of a lease agreement?
I, I think.
Going to come back to us?
I, I think I would characterize it a little bit differently. The, the total term of property control they're looking for is 50 years. So indeed, we, we know the term. We can come at that term a couple of different ways. It could be in a series of leases with options to renew and at each one of those options there could be an event to recalculate the lease. So the escalator is indeed missing. The, the term is there. We have the value. We could discuss whether it's a value you find appropriate, but it's the last value that the council approved and that's why we put it forward that way.
Well, I would certainly feel a lot more comfortable if we had, I don't, I'm not against this lease. I, I just would like to see the terms in a clearer spelled out way before we give final approval to it.
Betty?
Thank you. I don't think that parking is the best use of any land, actually, and especially on, in a place like this. If there, again, if we're growing, there're going to be more demands for land if we, unless we spread all over the countryside. And a, a fast food place might be a good use of this land. I know you said they didn't, there was a problem getting in and out with cars, but if we have many more students there, they can walk to the place and there'll be more of a demand for fast food with, with more students nearby. And I don't, I just don't see giving a, a good deal on something that's going to be used for parking. Usually, we've been saying, we want to get rid of flat parking, of covering the land with parking. And the question is, will they continue to, will they build if they don't get this land?
They have a parking requirement for the development of this project. They're looking for a place to make an addendum to their parking supply. This is a nearby site and it's a site that is compromised for other uses and so they've made this request.
Thank you.
Claire?
So how soon would the, if we approve this lease and we enter into the lease with them, how soon would the city see revenue from this lease?
Our assumption would be that this lease would become active when they're ready to take occupancy. So it's about a year from now.
Okay, so there's no deferral or waiting or anything related to the MUPD in terms of the revenue on this particular lease?
Correct.
Okay. I don't know if this would help Councilor Zelenka in terms of specificity on the motion, but we could, I move to amend the motion to read after the, enter into a lease with an option to purchase to include escalation of lease payments with increase in property value over time.
Oh, accept that as friendly?
Okay. I don't know if that helps Councilor Zelenka feel more confident about the terms of...
You just made those guys really nervous.
If that language works in terms of what we're trying to get at there, because I agree, I think that, that's a detail that's not in our AIS and we've talked about at the table, but we should put it in writing.
Did you say up to 50 years?
Oh, no. Enter into a lease of up to 50 years with an option to purchase to include escalation of lease payments with increase in property value over time.
Is it okay with you, George?
Yeah.
All right, so now we'll go to Chris.
Thanks. Being mindful of your obligation as the city manager to execute contracts. Hopefully, you, you hear what we're talking about at the table and as you take that into account, as you execute the contract, one would assume that that would take place. At the same time, in hearing issues brought up by a number of folks, in particular Alan, as you negotiate the terms of the contract, I'm not asking you to seek approval from the city council, you still have that authority, but you might just say, "Here's what I've got so far. Does this look okay?" And just get some opinion, just some feedback.
I'm very comfortable with that and touching bases backing with that. Just like you, we have an interest in securing a really, a good stewardship decision for the community.
I, I would assume you're paying very great attention to what's being talked about here because some good stuff's being talked about and some ideas for what to put into this ultimate contract, not only for this one, but for future contracts that we may negotiate. So I think it might be fine that you hear what we're doing, you, you incorporate that in and then as you get the terms nailed down, because yeah, there's still a lot of unanswered questions, you would run it by and say, "Does this look acceptable to you? Does this look like we're in the right direction?" But you would still have the authority to execute the contract. I think that sounds reasonable.
Great.
Thank you, Mayor. Refresh my memory on, on something here. How much property tax revenue are we gaining from the LCC development?
Zero.
How long did that hole in the ground go unfilled?
You had to bring that up. I would, I would say about...
Four years.
Five to, five-plus years.
Long enough for Drix to name it?
So, you know, it, it's all, it seems to be all right for us to have a public-public development, but a public-private development seems to be a little more tricky, even in the fact that we are not losing any money. We will still get to have the property tax revenue that we're getting now, which is a miniscule amount. And in year six, seven, eight, and nine, we'll start beginning to see some crawl back in terms of monies that will be coming accruing to the city to the benefit of the general populace. You know, how, how, when, when the University of Oregon builds student housing on its campus, how much property tax revenue do we get from that?
Zero.
Okay. Yeah, well, I'm, I'm, I'm making this as a point. The point of the matter is, is that we have a piece of property that's a brownfield that without some kind of stimuli from the city, which is not unprecedented because we just did this not too long ago for that stick structure over on the other corner on 13th Avenue. And according to the documents that were presented at the last work session, in terms of the research that staff did on other similar developments around the country, this again is not unprecedented. I think that we would be remiss in not taking advantage of a deal of this nature for the location and for the benefits, the long-term benefits that I think that it will bring to this city.
George, number vote.
I just wanted to say that I'd like to make a motion before we adjourn after the vote.
Okay, ready to vote on this one then? All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six in favor, in opposition, two, it passes. Yes, George?
I move to hold the work session on MUPD revisions that would last for one hour and start at the end of tonight's public hearing. If I get a second, I'll speak to it.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Moved and seconded. Go ahead and speak.
Because now, what I, what I said would happen at the start of this meeting has happened. We had three things on the agenda. We got through two of them. Now, it, it's, it's really poor scheduling of a public meeting to put important items like that all together in an hour and a half work session. So now, if we don't meet later, which I'm willing to do, we're going to have to schedule several other MUPD revision meetings. We do, it's, it's a good start. We still have a long, a long ways to go. We may have to extend the, extend the suspension because we're going to be, we're going to be gone, everyone's going to be gone in August. We're going to, there's no meetings, so, and it kicks back in in September. And if we, if, if you're not going to schedule proper meeting time to work through this, I don't think we have any choice except to extend, extend the suspension, which I'm totally willing to do. But I'm already putting back, agreed to put back the safe demolition protocols, work sessions, and I made those requests and this request a year ago, exactly a year ago, my requests were approved and now we're just starting to talk about it. I'm willing to delay the other one two more months, but if we, this is the problem when you put too much stuff on, in one meeting. You can't devote, I still had several questions left about the Core Campus. It just, so it's, it's just a bad way to go and that's the reason I'm making that motion. I figure an hour won't kill us and we could at least work our way through, through, get a good start on it.
George, Pauline?
You know, I've been on the council for, this is my 11th year and there's been quite a few instances where we've not gotten everything on the agenda. And it's not, I don't think it's not poor scheduling, I think it's just the amount of work that we have to deal with. In fact, this is an additional meeting that we didn't even have scheduled until not too long ago. So trying to work in the schedule, we, we're starting to add meetings. I, I just think that it's, it's, kind of take offense to your comments, George, because it's making us, your comments are making us look like we're not able to handle the businesses of the city, which I think we're doing. We're doing a good job of it. We're all working hard at this, but to sit there and say that, you know, we're just not getting everything accomplished, I, I think is just, is wrong. We're getting quite a bit done. In fact, we're getting more done now than we did when I first came on the council in 2003 and, and, you know, every year during the last four or five years, we've seen we getting more and more done. And if something gets pushed back on the agenda, that's because we're taking our time to go through these items that are very important to our community that we address in a proper manner. So I, I'm not going to support your motion. I think that it's, you know, a procedure that we've followed forever, that if you're not, if we don't get to something on the agenda, then we just move it to the next available meeting.
I just want to say that I, as George has said, that I see a big difference...
I just want to say that I, as George has said, that I see a big difference from when I first was mayor, and we had council meetings where we briskly went through sessions without much conversation at all sometimes. So I think that we've been very deliberative and spent multiple meetings discussing items where we used to just kind of, at one point, we're just quickly hammering through, and I think it's because everybody's asked to be engaged and thoughtful in the process, and I think that people have been very, very thoughtful. So now we're going to, yes, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just want to say one more thing to Councilor Poling's concern. This was not meant as a slam on council, or any, or anybody at this table, really. It's just, it makes no sense to me to, to schedule these three pretty important things in, in one meeting. And so what's going to happen is, we're going to, we're going to be rushed with the MUPD revision deadlines, it's going to be difficult to schedule an extra two, we might need three more meetings. And then we'll go on break, and then the suspension will expire, and I will make a motion to extend the extension, the suspension for another month or two until we can really nail down a good product, and people will, I can almost see it. And people will say, well, no, this sends a bad message to the developers. And this is just, we're, we're caught in this cycle, you know? It's, it's like, I'd like to see us come up with a really good product, and that's going to take time. And so I don't think an extra hour will kill us. I think we take too much time off anyway. You know, look at the calendar, and if you, if you put in yellow highlighter all the time we take off, it's pretty amazing. There's all kinds of time when we could be having meetings. Thanks.
Alan?
I need a refresher on what we did before on the extension of MUPD and when that timeframe, does anybody recall?
My recollection is that you recently extended that, I believe, until the end of August, so that you could actually take action on MUPD during July, and your action that would occur during July would take effect before the suspension expired. So I see Michelle nodding her head, that's her recollection too, so I believe it's, right now, the suspension expires at the end of August.
Right, and that presupposed a public hearing in July, where there's only one. So, and to, backing up, to get something on the public hearing, when do we need to decide that in order to get it on the July public hearing? There's time for that, too.
Right, about three weeks before the public hearing date is the latest that you can give the direction that we would need to draft the ordinance, so that the ordinance is posted and notice is given before the public hearing.
And that is?
Currently, July 15.
Public hearing?
It's a public hearing. We do have public hearings on non-public hearing dates, and so, between now and July 31st, you know, we, there's not a requirement between a public hearing and a, an action day for any particular time period.
Correct. Council has the authority to act immediately following a public hearing. You generally don't, but you have done it occasionally.
So probably what we've been wanting, or trying to do, is ensure that you have enough time, based on your continuing conversation, because it is an important issue, of course. And depending on what you choose to do tonight, we can come back with a, a schedule that tries to provide additional MUPD time to, to ensure that you still make a decision before you go on break, so it doesn't deal with the suspension, but it may mean the public hearing shifts to a different night, as opposed to that standalone meeting. So that's a possibility as well.
Right, okay, that's why I asked the question, because I think we at least need one more discussion meeting, and then a decision meeting, which would then put it on public hearing, and then we'd have a meeting after that to make the final decision.
Yes, however many times you would like to meet, we would try to accommodate that to the schedule, so yes, we could.
Do you think we can accommodate that?
Greg?
One of the reasons why I supported Councilor Brown's motion was because, you know, a very short period of time, we have added a significant amount of rigor to, proposed rigor to the program, and I think that deserves us doing as much due diligence as necessary to make sure that we get this right. I think that that's what, you know, the overall community expects, it's what the development community expects. I think that, you know, for us to, to give this short shrift would not be in the best interest of the city or this council. So I, you know, I supported that, that motion because of that fact. This is a very hot topic, and I think that, you know, we need to, you know, perform the due diligence necessary to create a product that is going to be beneficial for everybody involved.
Okay, so we're ready to vote on Councilor Brown's motion. All those-
To clarify, is to add an hour after the public hearing to discuss MUPD.
That's correct. Okay, all those in favor, please indicate. Three, four in favor. In opposition? One, two, three, four in opposition.
I'll be in favor.
You're going to be in favor?
Come on, Magic Mike.
Are you going to be in favor?
I am going to be in favor.
Okay, so then it passes, and you're going to work an hour tonight? Okay, all right. See you back-
You were persuasive, George. I'd have a girlfriend.